Good evening and welcome to the January 10th, 2023 regular meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. This is a public meeting and if any member of the public would like to make a comment on any item, there are several ways. If you are on Zoom, when the public comment period opens, use the raise your hand icon. You will be unmuted when it's your turn. If you're on your phone, you can also join the meeting and comment by pressing star nine. Again, you will be unmuted when it's your turn to speak. And if you are in attendance, you can approach the podium and make your comment. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. This meeting is now officially called to order and we will begin with the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges the lands we are located on are their unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in the dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. So Director Loyah, can we get a roll call, please?
Yeah, good evening Chair. I will begin the roll call with introductions of our newest planning commissioners. And I'll let them say a few words about themselves. They were appointed at the last city council meeting. And so we'll start the roll call with Commissioner Lehman.
Present and a pleasure to be here. I'm really looking forward to working with all of you and making Arcata the beautiful city we want it to be.
Great, thanks. And Commissioner Simmons?
Present and really excited to be here. I think all the commissioners have heard me talk before, but it will be fun to be one of you guys.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Tagney?
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Present.
Vice Chair Davies?
Present.
And Chair of the State Alco.
I'm here. And at the staff's table, we have David Loyah, Director of Community Development, and Dila Freitas, Senior Planner. Is anyone else going to be joining us from staff?
We don't have staff, but we'll have our consultants joining us tonight. So Heather Equinas will be joining for the exercise that we'll be doing under the Agenda Item Two.
Whoops. It's time for oral communications. This time is provided for people to address the commission or submit written communications on matters not on tonight's agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the commission may respond to statements. Any requests that requires commission action will be set by the commission for future agenda or referred to staff. Is there any member of the public who has something that's not on tonight's agenda?
Planning Commissioners and staff and people in the room and on Zoom, my name's Joanne McGary. I come to these meetings often, as I do to the city council. So you might, I might be a familiar face in the future for some of the newbies here. But I'm just wanting to remind everybody in 2023, this is the year of the climate reality. And so that I just want to remind people, there's a regional climate action plan in the works. And so I would really hope that all the discussions that we have, even if we don't have definitive plan on climate action voted on and implemented, that our community in Arcata really takes the climate issue as first and foremost in all our discussions on anything we're talking about in regards to our city. So all the things that are involved, like sea level rise and, you know, relocation of infrastructures or improving infrastructures, changing our energy system, all those types of things. I just think it's time that we really get down to brass tacks and do what we need to do for the climate. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Good evening, Gregory Daggett. It's been probably about a year since we started this process. So I like to bring up some of the basic things that I think has been overlooked that we're just finding out now. Number one would be the economic reality of this project. From the standpoint, Ollie had a presentation, a brown bag special presented by Chris Dart on affordable housing here in Arcata. And I was pretty much shocked by the YouTube video from the standpoint that basically Dan Coe is saying that anything over four stories is not economically feasible. It's not going to be low income housing. Low income housing is from four stories and below. So that really runs counter to all the time that we've been spending of all the things that we want from developers. So I don't understand how that could have been missed. So I would recommend everybody seeing that video and learning a lot more about the process from the developer standpoint. The second point I would make is the coastal part of it, which is 30% of the project. To this day, I still, I've given you a lot of information that I've looked up, particular coastal laws regarding this project. That was the height of buildings. They're not, I've talked to them, they're not too happy with that. And also from the standpoint of sea level rise, there's pretty new laws regarding that in the last year that have come out. So I can't quite understand how you, where, where a barrel district, for example, of seven stories, I guess, was what you agreed on, how you can go ahead with that without, you know, having this run through the Coastal Commission and the whole process of understanding their need, what they want from this. And my understanding is you're not going to get this through. So we're wasting a lot of time from that standpoint, not figuring out, not asking questions of the Coastal Commission. Office is just down the street. I don't think there's been communication in the last year there. The third element, I would say, is, is safety from this, this project and safety from the standpoint of it's also tsunami zone. It's also a former wetland area. There's been information that I've passed on from Cal Poly professors that have PhDs saying this is a terrible idea to build in these areas. And also from the standpoint of, we have some other experts that, you know, really are telling us that this is going to be affected by sea level rise. And there's a lot of issues evolve around that. So I don't understand how, these are all things that did not cost money, didn't have any need to have any environmental impact. It was just common sense things from the beginning that should have been asked from the beginning. It would have saved a lot of time for the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregory.
Hi, James Becker. I request to cede my time to Fred Wise.
Okay, so Fred, you have six minutes. And James, you will not be able to come back up during this, this item.
Thank you, Chair. The, I wanted a little more time because I have some things that are important to say. I met with Alderon Laird yesterday for about an hour and a half or almost two hours. Alderon, as you know, is recognized as one of the leading experts on sea level rise in the state. Mostly I listened and took notes. He's a scientist. I'm not a scientist. I'm more concerned about how it impacts development in Arcata, not, of course, sea level rise is an issue globally. So these are some of the, the notes. He may be available to speak before the city council and the planning commission. We'll talk about that another time. So the Commissioner Mayor has brought up the notion of emerging groundwater. Alderon pointed out that while sea level rise is obviously of the largest concern, there are other issues. Emerging groundwater is one, and the breaching of the existing dikes. And then, of course, improvements required to the wastewater treatment plant and a consideration of moving the plant. He pointed out that the NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, regards flooding from a king tide that happens two or three times a year to be a nuisance. When it happens more than four, four or more times a year, it's considered a chronic condition. It's, for those of us who are here in 2005, there was a large storm on New Year's Eve. The, it registered, and as well as high winds and a king tide, it registered the highest level of 9.6 feet. Alderon walked at the Arcata Marsh, he found 18 places where the dikes were breached. The average king tide now is 8.8 feet. That was 9.6 feet. So we're really talking about one foot of sea level rise to make a difference. This is not something way in the future. We're not talking about three feet or six feet or that kind of thing. The, the, King Salmon is considered to be, have flooded in less than 20 years. That's lower than we are, of course. But the, the, it is his opinion that just one foot of sea level rise, which could happen in 20 years, will breach the dikes. Okay? When that happens, more air gets flooded, there's a groundwater problem. It doesn't necessarily apply to sea level rise for the buildings, but it is a problem. The, for those of you who know, the Dyke State from about 1870, when the whole area was salt marsh. If you look at old Arcata Road out towards Three Corners, all that from there to the bay was salt marsh. Looking at the salt marsh maps that Alderon provided, it pretty neatly coincides with the Gateway District. That's about 20 feet elevation above current sea level. The, as he put it, no one can question if this is going to happen, it's just a question of when. And so when we're looking at construction, you know, we're looking at the useful life of the buildings, it's likely that this is going to happen within the useful life of new buildings. There's been five studies on how sea level rise, the progression of sea level rise that have been done. Each of the five has come up with a different prediction that's quicker, sooner than the previous one. And it's possible that's going to continue. So as time goes on, it may be a bigger problem than we thought. I asked Alderon for his opinion on how the Coastal Commission might view some of these issues. He can't, of course, say what the Coastal Commission is going to do. But he doesn't believe that the Coastal Commission is going to be very amenable to building housing in this area. They look at 100-year expected sea level rise, and that's pretty much the whole Gateway area, as part of their assessment. They may require that lower levels of the buildings be not for residents, which could fit in with the desire to have commercial in the lower levels. They may require breakaway walls on the buildings. Again, we don't know. And as I understand it, I think David will confirm, they don't offer suggestions. We, we apply the project to them and then they, they work from there. The, let's see. I read through the February 2022 draft of the local coastal element that is going to be worked on this year. It's my view that if the words there are followed as they are written, then no development can occur below 8th Street. That's just my opinion. In reading the language, reading the qualifications that are expressed in the local coastal element draft, this would include the AmeriGas site, the old St. Vinnie's building, where Tomas used to be, opened where our clinic is now, the Greenway Building, the trailer park, Wing Inflatables, the entire industrial area along Samoa, and more. Commissioner Mayor had suggested at one point, creating district boundaries that coincide with the coastal zone. This would not be difficult. The, currently, the corridor, Gateway Corridor, just goes from Samoa to a little above 11th Street. That could be divided into a lower corridor from Samoa to 8th and an upper corridor from 8th to 11th Street. That's the report there. As I said, he and perhaps Jeff Anderson and Brad Finney could do a presentation to the city council or a joint session on this. Now, next, right?
That was six minutes.
That was six minutes. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Okay.
Is there anyone else or anyone online?
We do have a couple of folks online. Go ahead, Anthony.
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much. Anthony DeLuca here, a 20-year resident, moved to Humboldt County when I was 12. Went to Arcata High School. You know, I have just a couple of things to say regarding some of the previous meetings that have happened in the past few months. I want to thank Commissioner Mayor for pointing out at the last planning commission meeting that the Dutch Bros is building a commercial building in Valley West and that they are not following the properly agreed upon procedures that were put together by the planning commission over, I believe she said, two meetings. And I want to point out that all of the meetings we did going over Slido and all of this time that we're putting in energy that we're putting into these plans that you guys are deciding on and working on, it, it just kind of feels like a slap in the face that Dutch Bros is building without following those procedures. I've read that, you know, corruption involved in building ends up getting people hurt because buildings aren't built to a code that can be seen as safe or going to last through things like an earthquake or a big storm or sea level rise. And I just feel like the elephant in the room that is continuously addressed is that there's a disconnect between what the city staff is putting together and what the Arcata public wants. And I want to point out, I apologize, David, but I want to point out that when David Loyah was appointed or chosen, it was quoted that he understood Arcata's values. But as an Arcata citizen, of the public, you know, a member of the public, I have not seen any proof of that. In fact, I've seen the opposite. I feel like the, you guys have put energy into increasing the amount of formula businesses that come into the area, which actually decreases the amount of economic flow for all of us who are actually citizens of the public here. Because every dollar spent on a formula business that, you know, maybe renting, if the franchise, you rented out of the area or owned by someone out of the area, a larger portion of that money leaves the area than when a dollar is spent here locally. And this creates a problem where people don't have as much money and they feel like they need to go to these cheaper places with lower grade quality food, might I say. And then the problem gets, becomes worse. And the problem with that is that the wealth gap increases and then crime increases, homelessness increases. It's not going to matter how much housing you build if you support out of town business in the area because people will become too poor to afford that housing. And it's not going to matter how much time and energy we spend planning it if those procedures are not followed. And that's a huge problem. And it was not cool the way that you laughed at Commissioner Mayor when she brought that up last time. Please do something about this. Do something for Arcata and actually think about Arcata when you make these plans and decisions. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jane.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nice to see you again in the new year. I want to just note that Chris, I invited Chris Dart to discuss the challenge of affordable housing at our Ollie Brown Bag Lunch program. And that video is available at the Ollie website, humboldt.edu/ollie. And go, and then you can go to the brown bag icon and go to the archives. And it was December 12th or 19th. I didn't, don't have it in front of me. I also want to point out that Alderon Laird has been giving a special interest group for the last six months of the last year, probably earlier than that. That's when I joined it, in the last four months. And he is so incredibly knowledgeable. And I do hope that he will either be invited to give a presentation to the planning commission together with that city council, which would make the most sense. Failure to get his insight would be something close to criminal. You need his insight. He is the most knowledgeable person around. There are also experts at HSU. They could all come and talk to you so you know what to anticipate and what is buildable. I also recommend you invite builders, such as Chris Dart and others, to come and discuss the feasibility of building higher than four-story buildings in the Gateway District before you commit to doing things like are being discussed. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. You've got a huge agenda.
Thank you, Jane.
And I sent comments to you earlier in the day, in case you, I will address those in the appropriate times.
Thank you.
That is all.
That's it. Okay. So we are going to move on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the commission and are enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. So we only have, only, we have a lot. We have three commission minutes. Does anyone need to pull any of those or can we have a motion to approve?
I'd like to pull items A and C.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve B? Or is, do I do that now or do I wait till the end, David? Okay, can I have a motion to approve item B and then we'll discuss A and C?
I move to approve item B.
We're first by Tagney. We're second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So what, let's start with item A. Judith?
Yeah, I, I have some questions about both of these. These are for the two regular planning commission meetings. On item A, which was the regular meeting of November 8th, I'm, there were a couple of things I was wondering about. The first is, is that the Gateway Area Plan was considered a public hearing rather than a business item. And that public hearing then was deemed to be closed at the end of that session. And it seems that the, the Gateway Plan consideration kind of goes back and forth between business item, public hearing, something that appears to be an action item and something that is continuing from time to time. And it would be really helpful if we could have some consistency with that. Or if there's some reason why it's going back and forth, it would be great just to clarify that. And then on the item C, which was the regular meeting of the 13th of December, we do have some detailed comments from members of the public noted. And I believe that we discussed at a previous agenda and minute consideration that it would make sense that unless we can consistently identify the details of all comments, that we should not include specifics of detailed individual public comments in the recorded minutes that we adopt. So I'd like to propose that we either provide that detail consistently for all public comments. And, and then, of course, that takes precedence over other types of comments and written material that maybe is on the website but that we don't have in print. Or that we have minutes that don't specify those individual public comments. And it's, it's just a consistency issue that I think it's important to not introduce bias. And I love the detail, but the consistency is more important to me.
Okay. And then also, I have on item C, so if, under seven, it says an explanation of why Arcata Fire Department was not on the agenda. Can we change it to Arcata Fire Protection District? Use their correct name. And then also, it says a member of the, in public encouraged the commission to watch the Ollie Brown Bag Lunch. That was actually me that suggested that. And I also suggested the possibility of changing the terms for private outdoor and recreation space. Small details, but, so do we want to, does anybody else have anything that they need to change? Is everybody okay with A and C? Do we want these to come back to us or do you want to make a, make a motion to approve with changes? Or how do we go about this, David?
Yeah, so the two changes that you just recommended are specific and direct enough to, to make the amendment to the questions that Commissioner Mayor had. You know, frankly, we don't have an admin specialist right now. So if you're out there in the viewing audience and you're looking for a great job with a great group of people, come apply with us. And so some of these details that the admin specialist typically focuses real closely on are slipping. And these should be business items. They should not be public hearings. The, the Gateway discussions are clearly business items. It's not important enough to have, you know, put them in one category or the other for the purposes of the Brown Act. They're listed on the agenda. You can discuss them. As to the, the public comment, you know, I'm following the same basic protocol that we've, you know, implemented for the entire time that I've worked here. If the planning commission wants to set aside some time and really hone in on specifically the kinds of things that we should be listing in terms of public comment, that might be a, a good use of time. I would certainly want direction from the entire commission on that. The intent in the minutes, if you look at the difference between the detail that's provided in the city council agendas versus the, or minutes rather, and those that the planning commission has typically approved. Planning commissions are a lot less detailed, but the idea is to try and give a sense for what the person discussed. All of these meetings are fully archived. If anybody wants to go and listen verbatim to the words that someone said, they have complete access to those 24/7. They're on our website. And so the idea here behind the minutes is to, you know, to try and provide that high-level summary, not a detailed or, you know, verbatim description of what they've said. So to the, the minutes amendments that you had suggested, Chair, you know, we can incorporate those by motion. I think I've hopefully addressed the, the questions that Commissioner Mayor, you raised. And if there's any further discussion on those, I'd be happy to entertain it.
Do we have a motion?
I motion to make the recommended amendments and approve the minutes in items A and C.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? You two recusing yourselves or?
We set it into the make.
They can still approve? They can approve? Okay.
Yeah, yes, the, the minutes, the great thing about minutes is that you really, even though it says you're approving them, you're basically accepting them into the record. And so if you weren't here at a particular meeting and you're there at the next one, you're, you're absolutely allowed to accept them into the, the record.
Okay, great. So we're going to move on to our first public hearing. Prior to opening each public hearing, commissioners must provide ex parte disclosures. Does anyone have any disclosures? The only one I have is I did meet with Eric and Randy Mendoza to prepare for this. So that's my only disclosure. So would you like to introduce it, David?
Yeah, so Commissioners, Chair, the item before you tonight, first item, is the Arcata Fire, sorry. Yes, I'm going to correct that right now. Not going to say that word. Arcata Fire Protection District presentation. And we've got one of their board members, Eric, here, and a couple of staff, Chris and Ed Laidlaw. And so I'm, I'm going to turn it over to them and let them take it away.
Okay, now your mic is on.
So I'll just start out that there's been a few exchanges over the past months where, where I or somebody else from the Arcata Fire Protection District has pointed out to staff or the commission that we are not the Arcata Volunteer Fire Department and we're not the Arcata Fire Department. And the reason for that is we actually have a branding problem in that a lot of people, so we have three stations. I'm going to go through and talk about the department and what we are and things like that to, to give you an orientation. And, and we'll see this later as well. But we have three stations, one here in Arcata, one in Mad River, and one in McKinleville. And there's a large number of people in our community that thinks there's three fire departments. A fire department in Arcata and a fire department in McKinleville and a fire department at Mad River. And a lot of our money, you'll see that as well, that well over 50% of our, our funding comes from voter-approved initiatives. And we include Manila, McKinleville, Bayside, and Jacobi Creek in our, in our district. And so we, when we run an initiative through, we'll And so we, when we run an initiative through, we'll get like huge numbers of yeses from Arcata and huge numbers of no's from everyone else because they think that Arcata wants money from them to run their fire department. And so when we make that point, it has to do with our, our branding, not being offended by an incorrect name. So, just, just to make that point. So first, I'm going to run through a little background about our fire district and then talk about staffing requirements for different types of buildings. And what we, minimum, what we think will be required for a fire district that would handle different sorts of heights and masses on buildings and then run through some financial figures that we have on, on that topic. And to start out with, probably you all know, but I will emphasize that the Arcata Fire Protection District is this community's and the entire district's first responder, first responders for all risk emergencies. So when you have a heart attack, when your kitchen starts on fire, if there's an automobile accident and somebody needs to be extracted from a car, all of that gets accomplished by staff from the Arcata Fire Protection District. We consider the fire district to be an integral part of the essential infrastructure for the communities that we serve. And as a preface, you know, you, you hear the chatter and we hear the chatter about who supports what and who's against this and for that. And, you know, as this past summer and fall, there was various chatter because I came here in August and there was chatter about the fire district being opposed to the Gateway Project or, and I don't, I don't know what the Gateway Project is yet because it's still in draft form and, and hasn't been written. So I don't know how anybody can be either for or against anything that's not done yet. But we want to, you know, preface the beginning of this present, presentation by letting you know that the district anticipates that there's going to be growth in our service area. I, I've been here 40 years now, 39 and a half, that'll be 40 years in July. And so, you know, when I moved here, it was 12,000 people, thank you. When I moved here, there was 12,000 people and there's about 18,000 now, so it's grown and we know it'll grow again. We also know that there's huge housing challenges. There's housing challenges in Arcata, in Humboldt County, in the state of California, in our country and all around the world. And we wish to be a partner in seeking resilient solutions to those problems. And by resilient solutions, I mean having a community where both the fire district and the, the community itself are comfortable that we have the resources to put out a fire or to pick somebody up and get them off to the, get them revived or off to the hospital if they have a heart attack. You know, I'm, I'm here as a government official, representing the board, having a discussion and conversation with you about what our needs are. And we share quite a bit of overlap in our constituency. So everyone in here, to be on the board, you have to be living in the city of Arcata. So all of you are my constituents. And since I live in the city of Arcata, I'm your constituent. And so it's, it's our goal to work with the city to find solutions where we can for some of these challenges and problems. So the, the issues that we have or the concerns we have, challenges we have, however you want to characterize them, the one I'm going to talk today is about staffing. And we'll actually have, as the city grows, as the district grows, we'll have staffing issues with just growth, period. And that we'll have more calls, there'll be more needs for our services. But building height and mass creates additional challenges that, that we'll discuss with you today. We also have, as all fire districts and fire departments and fire agencies have, are always talking about access because access is important. And particularly with the form code and it being new and things like that, we saw that there was a need to have dialogue early and perhaps often about how, how to, how to interface with the form code so that the fire marshal, Ed, is brought in at the appropriate times to make sure that all the Ts were crossed and Is were dotted and that particularly if you're doing ministerial review, that things didn't get too far down the line and then somebody would argue that changes needed to be made and somebody else would not be happy with that because they'd already given approval. I'm going to come back and talk right at the end about access a little bit. And another issue we have, and I'm not going to touch on it all tonight, is water supply. I tou, I touched something.
Yeah, just click it to the, in the black, not in the white.
I just, I put all these up here. Some other people like to go through one at a time. I like to put them all up there. So the Arcata Fire Protection District is a California special district. We were formed by the county in 19, oh, yes. I talk loud, but it won't get picked up if I don't speak into the mic. I apologize. So we're an independent, a California independent special district. We were established by the county in 1944 to provide fire protection in this portion of the county. We're regulated by the Califor, the state of California special district laws and we have, oh, we're also regulated, there's a 1987 fire district law. So we're, we're governed by those particular laws. You have other special districts in the area, the Humboldt Bay Water District, over in McKinleyville, McKinleyville Services District, the Harbor District. So a city like Arcata has a narrower geographic distribution than we do, but a broader portfolio of things that they get assigned by the state that they have to do. And we have a narrower portfolio, fire protection, emergency medical services, things like that. We have a broader geographic distribution. So we, we're governed by a board of five elected individuals. We have three fire stations, I've already mentioned those. One of them is here in downtown Arcata, it's, it's about a block or so away from here. We have another station in Mad, in Mad River on Jane's Road, it's just down the street from the hospital. And then we have a third station in downtown McKinleyville, that's where our headquarters is, that's on Central Avenue. Each of those staffed fire stations has, we have a variety of equipment, but most critically, each of those stations is staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with an engine that has a firefighter, a captain and a firefighter assigned to those vehicles. So we have six firefighters on staff continuously, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'll talk a little bit more about how staff rotations work in a few minutes. Our jurisdiction is 62 square miles and includes the city of Arcata, Bayside, Manila, McKinleyville and Jacoby Creek. We run approximately from Indianola to Clam Beach. We have a population of about 36,000. And I think this year, we're up about 10% for that, I think. We're up around 3,600 incidents. So we, the number of responses and calls that we answer each year is, on the slide, it says 3,300 plus, 8% fire, 50% of them are emergency medical services. And I think this year, we're up about 10%. So we'd be around 3,600 calls. I don't carry a pager or a phone that rings every time when the, when the fire district folks go out. But when I was with Julie and Randy going through the, the talk and telling her about what we do and, and going through that with her, the phone rang, what, five times in an hour and a half? We were, so those were, the engines went out five times in an hour and a half to do Okay, so now we start getting to, you know, part of the critical elements that, that brings us before you. So there's an organization called National Fire Protection Association. They put together guidelines and they're just that, they're guidelines, they're, for the most part, not necessarily enshrined in ordinances. And the, the National Fire Protection Association Document 1710 is the recommendations on what the initial, this is not the total deployments, these are the initial deployments for different kinds of fires. And so our goals and guidelines are that and our, you know, our intention is that the first unit that leaves the station will arrive at an incident in four minutes and that the balance of the, the units from our district will arrive there in eight to 10 minutes. The firefighters that are required for residential structure fire is recommended to be 14 as the initial deployment. Firefighters required for a small commercial multifamily or a three-story garden apartment is 25. And a, the firefighters required for a high-rise building is 38. And once again, I'll probably say this a lot, that's for the initial deployment. And we will acknowledge and point out here that we cannot meet these fire response deployments even with mutual aid. And I, and I, this is a good time to talk about auto aid and mutual aid and then we'll see that in a couple more slides later. But almost all fire departments, fire agencies, fire districts use each other as additional manpower. Almost no community, you know, if you're in San Francisco or San Jose, Chicago, they probably, you know, 90% of their incidents, they'll respond to with only their manpower. But other areas, other geographic areas where the communities aren't that large, they coordinate across each other and respond to each other's incidences. And those are usually deployed by a command center. And for us, the command center is in Fortuna. CAL FIRE coordinates it. I think we can contribute money to it. And if, if you call 911, the phone rings in Fortuna. And if it's a fire call in Arcata, they know which station is the lead station, but they will, so they'll call out to all the Arcata stations, but they'll also call out to our aid partners, which would be, could be West Haven, Field Brook, Blue Lake, Samoa, the CAL FIRE in Trinidad. We'll see somewhere where it can go out even further than that. So that's mu, auto aid is, is when they call us, they call those other folks and they're all headed toward the incident. Mutual aid, and if, if, if Chris wants to weigh in if I get too far off track here, but mutual aid typically takes place when they've arrived and they're calling in for additional help because they get in on an incident and realize that it's beyond the capabilities and capacities that, that they have there at the time. And the, so I showed you there on the slide, I'll stay right here, why, or that we had, you know, arrive in the first four minutes and have most of the units there in eight to 10 minutes. And this is a diagram that shows how a fire takes off in a building. And so you have, somebody detects the fire, they report the fire, 911 dispatches it. And if we're not there in four or five minutes after we get the call, it's, because we get there, they get set up within just a couple of minutes, pumping water, doing their investigations, taking charge of things. And if they don't do it in that kind of timeframe, then, you know, the fire can get away from So what does it look like here in Arcata? So the first column there shows the personnel and you guys have all this in, in your packet so you can see it and think about it. But these are all the critical tasks on, on the left-hand side that the, the fire department needs manpower for. And the first responding units up there, that's the Arcata chief. So if it was, if this was a fire in Arcata, the chief or the assistant chief would be the duty officer, that would be in charge of the operation. They're going to come from McKinleyville because that's where they're located. It takes about eight minutes. If it's in Arcata, the Arcata engine from the firehouse down the road, that'll take about two, two minutes for them. The Mad River engine will come in third, that takes about seven minutes to get here. And the McKinleyville engine will then come in and that'll be in about 11 minutes. So that's right on the border of the recommended times. And to get to higher numbers, to get to our 14, that would be seven people. Those, if I, I'm not going to try to go back, this thing will blow up on me. So the Arcata chief, Arcata engine, Mad River engine and McKinleyville engine, that's a total of seven people. And so automatically what would be coming would be, the Blue Lake chief would come, a Blue Lake engine would come, the Humboldt Bay Fire chief would come. And we have a contract with Humboldt Bay Fire for their ladder truck. And so if we need a ladder truck, if a ladder truck gets called, they'll bring the ladder truck if it's available. If they're using it, if it's out on a call, it may not be available. And the last one I have listed here is Samoa. And one of the things I want to point out, all the, all the locations there with the asterisks at the end of them, those are all volunteer departments. And they, first of all, they're, they're further away, so they have further to travel. So that influences their travel time. But they're also volunteers and, and different, different volunteer departments. But they're also volunteers, and, and different, different volunteer departments have different organizations. Some of them have volunteers come in that are manning the stations for part of the day. Others have people that are designated to be on call, and some of them are just call everybody. And depending on where they are, it can take a long time. So, for example, the fire chief in Fieldbrook is from McKinleyville, and he, he's given a truck, but if he's in McKinleyville and they have to set up, he's got to drive to Fieldbrook to, to just get started. So, and that's actually one of the challenges for Arcata and for the Arcata Fire Protection District when we look at scaling up, is the distances that we have to deal with. How many stations do we need? Where do the stations need to be located? How many people need to be at each of them to support different sorts of fire responses? This, this slide that says fire response worst-case scenario, someone looked at this and commented to me that they thought that there could be worse cases, worse cases than this, and I told them that, well, my, my interpretation of this is that this is the best we can do. Not, it's not that, 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 that this would handle the worst fire that could come down the road. This is the best we can do. And here, so we're looking at, I'm not going to try to use that. So all of the various locations on the left-hand side, the Blue Lake, Humboldt Bay Fire, West, West Haven, Samoa, Fieldbrook, all the way through to Neeland, those would all come through with auto aid. And Lolita, Fortuna, I think that's probably the CDF engine in Fortuna, and Riedel, those, Ferndale, those would all be part of mutual aid. So those would be called in secondarily. And the point for us is that, at the current time for a three-story apartment fire, that everybody should be there in eight to 10 minutes, we're actually looking at the final group getting there at 19 or 20 minutes. And if we look at 38 firefighters for initial call-out for a quote-unquote "high-rise," we're looking at 42 minutes. And those minutes would be, you know, potentially lethal. People stuck in a building, smoke inhalation, that, that's too long. I'll let, I'll let, if you ask the question about where the time limit break is, would be, I'm going to defer to Chris on that. But those are too long. Those are unacceptably long. What is a high-rise business or building, pardon me? The, the technical language, if, if you go through and look at fire district, fire department, fire agency, they all develop their own sort of categories and decide what height is, counts for what. But technically, most consider a high-rise building is one that the lowest, or the tallest occupied floor is more than 75 feet above the lowest level of fire department vehicle And so that's a high-rise building. In Boston, I, I think that's probably practice, but I'll give you some numbers later to show you that. And I think that's, you thought that was like a six-story building, didn't you? So that's about a six-story building. And once again, I don't know whether that's practice or a real incident, but I think they have probably four or five ladders that they're using on that six-story building. Okay. Whoop. How do I go back? All right. The proposed gateway building types. I refer to those as mid-rise buildings, four to eight stories. Some would say eight stories at 90 feet, that would be a high-rise. So four to seven, four to eight are typically referred to as mid-rise buildings. Firefighting in mid, in mid-rise buildings present essentially the same challenges to a fire department that high-rise do. And this is a group that there's no explicit recommendation from the National Fire Protection Association on what the response standards are for that kind of building. And so unless and until we had a standard of coverage that suggested otherwise, the Arcata Fire Protection District would treat mid-rise buildings the same as, as high-rise buildings. To give you, so a high-rise building, initial call-out is, you know, 38, 38 firefighters. I need to change my glasses here. So one interesting group that we have here in the state of California is the Sacramento area. And they use auto aid and mutual aid amongst a variety of departments there. So there's Sacramento Regional Fire and EMS Communication Center. It includes four paid fire agencies and six volunteer agencies. So it's got Casumnes, Community Service District Fire, City of Folsom, Sacramento Metro, and the City of Sacramento. And they have produced standard operating guidelines for three different classifications of fires. And for them, for a mid-rise fire, and they call, they're bigger than us, they call, what we call mid-rise, they call low-rise, because that's where they live. So for, for the initial call-out for a fire between four and seven stories, has five engines, three trucks, two chiefs, and one medic. That would be 30 individuals if there's three people on a truck, or pardon me, three people on an engine, a captain, engineer, and a firefighter. And it would be four people on a truck, a captain, an engineer, and two firefighters. And so that would be 30 people for their call-out. So that's the initial response. But for the second alarm, they want four engines, two trucks, two more chiefs, and one more medic. So there, now you're looking at 23 more people. So you're looking at a total of 53 people that are going to be in line to be called out in a four to seven-story fire in the Sacramento area. And as a board member and public official, I certainly think that any residents that we have living in structures like that, we should be providing with them similar sorts of capacities to deal with emergencies in those buildings. So how many firefighters does it take? And poor Justin McDonald had to hear this question from me all last year. How many do we want? How many firefighters is it going to take? And he kept saying, "We need a standard of coverage. We need a standard of coverage." But we will give you some numbers right here. But we want to let you know that each community is different. We have different population sizes, we have different geographic areas, we have building height and mass variation, and we have different capacities of regional aid. All of those will, you know, go into thinking about how high we can go, how big we can go, and what's required. And the formal method for establishing staffing and where stations are located would be a standard of coverage. We have argued both to the city since last February and to the university that one of these needs to be done. And no matter what you decide, you know, following my presentation and our conversation, we still think that needs to be done. If the community's going to grow, doesn't really matter whether we stay at four stories or 40 feet that we recommend later or higher, we really need to have a formal analysis done so everybody understands, you know, and everything is transparent about the decisions that we're making. So the next, this slide is going to provide you with some comparisons with other similar agencies in smaller towns in the state of California. So Humboldt Bay Fire, and Humboldt Bay Fire is a, is a JPA, it's a joint power authority. And so it's both the City of Eureka and the Eureka Fire District. They combined together to form one agency a few years ago. They have 51 staff, they keep 17 on duty, and they have a budget of $9.98 million. Chico Fire Department, and Chico's bigger, Chico has like 100,000 people in it, and their, and their campus is a little bigger than ours. They have suppression staff of 57 individuals, 14 on duty, a budget of $17 million. San Luis Obispo, somewhat bigger, it's, San Luis Obispo is bigger than Arcata by quite a bit, but not all that much bigger than our fire district in terms of people, and certainly not bigger than our fire district in terms of the population size that we would anticipate over the next 20 to 25 years. So they have suppression staff of 49 firefighters, they have 14 on duty with a budget of $13.9 million. The Arcata Fire District has a suppression staff of 18. We have seven on duty and a budget of $6.4 million. And this is a good time, we'll see another slide in just a moment, but to talk about, you know, 18 suppression staff, seven on duty, and, and where, you know, where those numbers come from, how do they work? And so we have, at, at a given station or across the district, we have an A unit, a B unit, and a C unit. Each of those units work 48 hours, so a crew will come on and they'll stay in a station for 48 hours. They rotate off, a different crew comes in for 48 hours. B crew, A crew comes in, B crew comes in, and then C crew comes in for the third, and then A, A crew comes back in. That's how they do their rotation. And so if we have a station that has two people on duty, an engineer, a captain on duty and an engineer on duty, that actually will take a staff of six. And so we have three stations, and so we have staff of 18 for that. And we have two, we have a, we have a fire chief, and we have a assistant chief, and they also serve as our duty officer. So they would go out on a fire and supervise and be in charge of operations at, at a fire site. So at minimum, Arcata Fire Protection District would need an additional 24 suppression staff to have staffing similar to other comparable towns in northern, or in California to respond to mid-rise emergencies. And how that, and once again, I've, I've mentioned this before, we continue to argue that if you really want to go up and big, we need to have a standard of coverage because of our location and because of the volunteer status of our aid partners, we may need more than that. We may need to have some additional stations that are staffed with career firefighters to meet that need. What would it cost? So, and I want to let you know that these budget figures are 60%, a little over 60% staff, 40% operational overhead. So when you look at $4.8 million for staffing 24 people, the staffing is only 60% of that, and the rest of it is operations, hoses, helmets, jackets, beds for the firehouse, all that stuff. So we would need an increased cost of, as I said, about $4.8 million, which would get, arrive at a budget of approximately $11.3 million. And what that would give us would be a staff with 14 on duty, which would be similar to all the other agencies that I showed you. Humboldt Bay Fire keeps 17 on, the other institutions, the other agencies have 14 on duty. But we have, we would have three engines with a staff of nine for 27 suppression staff. So we, we have on our engines one captain and one engineer, and that's actually not enough, even under our current conditions. If we had our preferences, we would have more money, and we would have a firefighter on each of those engines along with a captain and an engineer for a variety of operational reasons. But nonetheless, we would have, we'd have three engine stations, each with a staff of nine. That's totaled 27 suppression staff. We'd have one ladder truck that has a staff of four on the ladder truck, so that yields a suppression staff, total staff of 12. We would have a shift duty officer, we would have battalion chiefs, so that would add three. So right now, what happens with our chief officers, they act as the duty officer, they work during the day, and they go home at night. Chris can explain how they communicate with the stations and with the command center. They have a truck, and if we, if we were, if we're required to do more, we would put our chief and our assistant chief more in administrative duties and have three battalion chiefs. And, and there'd be three of them for the A, A group, and the B group, and the C group, and they would stay in the station and be on station 24 hours a day. So that totals 24 more in our current staffing. So we start to look at finances. And we get, the fire district actually has two groups. We have a fire suppression group, and we have a fire prevention group. Fire prevention group is an enterprise group, I'm sure, well, it's like in the city of Arcata, the sewer and water is, is an enterprise fund. They get to charge, you know, the going rate for that. They have to, they have to print out what our rates are, and they can't charge more than it costs to deliver the service. But those are fairly easy money to get. And we have, so we have a fire marshal, Ed Leyla is the fire marshal, and he reviews all the plans, he gets paid to do that. And- all the plans, he gets paid to do that, and, and we charge for that. We have a building inspector that does apartments, I think California state law requires that the apartments get inspected every year, and we have a fire inspector, he gets paid and we charge for that. Both of those are part-time positions, they're retired new tenants and are willing to work for us, and we're grateful to have them. There's, we, there's other revenue is interest and a variety of fees we get from some other government agencies. The two key ones that I, that I want to talk about and explain is first property tax, and that's ad valorem, which means of value, and that's when you pay your property tax every year, a portion of that goes to the fire district, not very much, I'm going to talk about that in just a moment. But the other two are special tax and our benefit assessments that are actually, you know, a bigger piece of our pie, a bigger piece of our funding than our ad valorem property tax. Those require voter approval. So those are assessments that we've deemed that, that our ad valorem property tax is not enough to fund the agency, and we've made an argument to the public and put together a ballot initiative and asked them to, to tax themselves and, and give us money. Those special taxes and benefit assessments are not based, they're based on parcels there, and the activities on a parcel, they are not based on the value of anything that's on a particular parcel. So all of you here that should happen to own a house in Arcata, you get two assessments, you get a, a benefit assessment for eighty-eight dollars, and you get a special measure F tax for a hundred and eighteen dollars. And it doesn't matter whether you have a little tiny thousand square foot bungalow or whether you have a five thousand square foot house in the hills somewhere, it's based on the parcel you live on. Property tax, on the other hand, is based on the value of the property. And what we get is five point six percent of the one percent that we get taxed. So the, when you get your tax bill, you, one percent of your assessed valuation, you write a check for that, plus all those other assessments, that, that growing list of assessments, and so one percent of your assessment goes to the county, and we get point, or five point six percent of that. So, and you'll, you'll see the consequences of how small that number actually is, so that's fifty-six ten thousandths of, of the assessment, point zero 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 five six. And the other thing that, as we go into discussing the gateway and changes that are going to take place in our community, we will get increases in the proper, in the ad valorem tax based on the valuations of the buildings. We do not anticipate very much change in our special tax and benefit assessments because the parcels aren't going to change very much. We get big increases in those parcel assessments when they're sprawled, when somebody takes a pasture, you know, somebody takes a fifty acre pasture and cuts it up into one-sixth acre lots, we get parcel tax on every one of those new parcels. In contrast, for example, the proposed Craftsman Mall project that, the state won't get taxed at all, I don't, but we'll, we'll pretend that it's in private hands, that's actually twelve parcels, and so if it was a private party developing that, they could combine those parcels all into one. And the way our parcel tax works, a multifamily structure, the parcel tax maxes out at twelve units, and so if you have, if you, once again, purchased the twelve or fifteen acres at the Craftsman Mall, combined all those parcels together into one parcel and built two, you know, a six-story and a seven-story building is being proposed, that had a hundred units in each one, we would get approximately seven hundred and fifty dollars from that in, in those assessment, in those parcel taxes. So, we don't anticipate getting very much from new construction in the gateway in terms of our special taxes and, and benefit assessments. Those, those taxes are based on, they're based on the parcel, they're also based on the activity. So, we have an assessment for multifamily homes, so, and whether it goes all the way down to two, I don't know, but it, there's a, there's an assessment for a unit of four and a unit of six and eight, and it maxes out at twelve. We have an assessment for mini storage units, and it would be based on the number of mini storage units. And so if you went from mini storage units, and I don't have all of that memorized, so if you went from mini storage units to, you know, an eight-story building, I would expect the evaluation, the assessment to go up, but not a whole lot. And this is just to show you that the special tax that we put in was required a two-thirds majority of the voters, and the two thousand and six benefit assessment required a, a simple majority of owners. Okay. So, this is some budget modeling that I did, and on the left-hand side, it shows our current district population size and our current breakdown in revenues. This is the same thing that you should, you saw on the previous slide. What I did was some population estimates, and I carried them out to twenty forty-five. And I'm not sure whether the, the general plan update is to twenty forty-five or, okay, so, okay. So that, I, that's why I did it, I selected the date twenty forty-five. When I did my population modeling, I used the same model that David Loyah discussed at your August twenty-third meeting, when you had your, your special meeting between the city council and the commissioners, he showed you some modeling there, and he also showed that to the government agencies back in February. And so I basically used the same modeling, used a point nine four percent growth, background growth rate, and I added the Cal Poly, and David didn't say in his presentation exactly the numbers that he used from Cal Poly, if I remember correctly. So his numbers could vary slightly from mine. I started using California Department of Finance population numbers, and I incorporated Cal Poly student additions over a period of seven years with half of it coming in the first three years and half of it coming in the last, spread out over the last four years. That's, Cal Poly is estimating that the population of, of the school will grow, if I understand correctly, by fifty-eight hundred students over seven years, so. And what I did was, I, I followed the same protocol that David established of applying forty percent of that student population to the City of Arcata, and I applied twenty percent of that student population to the unincorporated part of the district. Some of them will live in McKinleville, some of them will, they'll, they'll live all over. And so I figured if David said that he was, he was good with forty percent in the City of Arcata, I'm going to say I'm good with that, and I'm good with twenty percent of them going to the unincorporated area. So then I, I ran out a little spreadsheet and grew that from, I don't know, twenty twenty to twenty forty-five. And what that gives us is Arcata growth rate of thirty-eight percent over that period of time, and unincorporated growth rate of thirty-one percent, and the two combined together, a district growth rate of thirty-four percent. And so what I did, and I, so I use, I'm telling you all that because I use those numbers to generate what I guessing will be revenue projections from different categories in the year twenty forty-five. So, with that modeling, we would guesstimate that the district population would have a population of forty-eight thousand three hundred individuals in twenty forty-five. And when I'm, when I'm doing my increases in the revenue projections, I'm attributing a thirty-four percent increase along, you know, just with the population for the charges for service and the other revenue, I've got seventeen percent. So this is why I was explaining to you the basis of those benefit assessments and the special tax. So I increased those by seventeen percent rather than thirty-four percent because we don't think they'll grow as much. Whether it should be less than that, whether it should be no more than that, I don't know, but that's what we did. And then all the rest of the money, we have to get to eleven million three hundred thousand dollars. And so all the rest of the money, we stuck in the ad valorem property tax. Have to have that much ad valorem property tax to get to eleven million three hundred thousand dollars. Okay. So, then what I did was I partitioned that eleven million dollars into a portion attributable to our original thirty-six thousand population and a portion attributable to the new twelve thousand three hundred citizens, residents that we have in the district. And you'll notice that the property tax has increased on the, the original thirty-six thousand twenty-two in our initial population component, that, the ad valorem tax has increased there. What I did was I tried to account for real estate sales, so if you own a home, if you own a home like I did, that I bought in nineteen eighty-seven, if I get struck by a truck on the way home from this meeting today and my children sell my house, whoever buys it will have to pay a lot more than I pay. And that, so I tried to account for the increase that you're going to get in ad valorem revenue in that, in the existing populations, because it's, it's turning over. And to do that, what I did was I took the district's ad valorem revenues from two thousand and ten, and I think I had two thousand twenty or two thousand twenty-one. And so I just compared those and found out the rate of difference between those, it was around two point four percent. So that includes both the inflation factor for, that, as our, as inflation, the county can increase our taxes, it includes new construction, and it includes resale. So then I took my own property tax bill from two thousand and ten and two thousand twenty-one and looked at the difference there and calculated that to be about an annual increase of about one point four percent annually, and so I wound up with annual increase of about point nine five percent. And so then I, I applied that over the period of time from twenty twenty-two to twenty forty-five to get that number of three million one hundred thousand dollars. Just so you know where that came from. Okay, this is what catches your breath. How much do we need in new assessed value from new construction to cover the three million five hundred thousand dollars in new ad valorem tax we need to pay for the fire district? And so you take that three million five hundred and fifty-two dollars and divide it by point zero 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 five six, and you come up with six billion, three hundred million dollars are needed in new construction to cover the cost of fire, new, upscaling the fire district. That's a big number. So then, what I wanted to do was look at what that means in terms of property purchases and property costs, you know, compared, so what I, rather than, rather than guesstimating what our revenue would be from some sort of build-out, that was always a little bit nebulous about what the build-out would actually be. So rather than asking that question, I said, how much, how much income am I going to have to get from, you know, building new properties? And so we have a twelve, twelve thousand three hundred population increase, and, and modeling work that the planning department has used, they've used two point three individuals per household, that's what the, the census actually says, two point three six, if I recall correctly, I think the Department of Finance said something like two point two. I don't really think it'll make that much difference in the ultimate conclusions, but, but those were, those were the numbers I'm using, used, I'm trying to be completely transparent with that. So, at two point three individuals per household, we would get five thousand three hundred and seventy-four units would be needed. So I'm a scientist, I'm a geneticist, that's my background. These planning documents drive me nuts because there's no standardization for what a unit is. It can, it can vary. So we have to go from dollars to units, back to dollars again, and to square feet and all that kind of stuff. So, all of this is a bit squishy, and I'm just acknowledging that upfront ahead of time. So if we have five thousand three hundred and seventy-four units, that's about one million one hundred thousand dollars per unit. And as a contrast, and I'm, I'm going to show you some numbers, I'm going to read them to you because I didn't put them on a slide, but if we compare this, that one million, almost one million two hundred thousand dollars, when they built Sorel, each of those units in Sorel, each of those four units had an average cost of five hundred thousand dollars. So Sorel costs twenty-two million dollars, and there's forty-four units, so that's a five hundred thousand dollar unit there. If I take a unit, so in the gateway, in the draft gateway plan, one of the tables in there says that the average unit will be nine hundred and forty-nine square feet, and so if we take, if we use that as the square feet per unit and put that into the one million two hundred thousand dollars per unit, you'll wind up with a thousand... $1 million, $200,000 per unit, you'll wind up with $1,244 for square feet. And if you multiply that times 1,500, it would mean that you would have to be selling 15 to pay for this, to get enough revenue from current building in 2022, $2,023, our 1,500 square foot homes would have to be selling for $1 million, $800,000. And both the per unit and for a 15,000 square foot home, I think, are unrealistic. So the other thing I did, and I watched Chris Dart's presentation and had, got struck by lightning and decided to use some of his numbers, he, in his presentation, I don't know if all of you have seen it or any of you have seen it, but he goes through a number of the Danko projects and how much they paid for them and how many units they each were. So I picked two of them. I picked Sorrel and I picked, so Sorrel is sort of a cheap one, or inexpensive, cheap is not a good word, inexpen, relatively inexpensive. And I, I, and I picked it because it's four stories. And I picked a seven-story project in San Jose. And so I, those, the San Jose one is a little bit difficult to incorporate into the comparison because it's more expensive down there. Anyway, what I did was said, how close can we get to the $6 billion, $300, $300 million if we had all 5,000 units built as Sorrel units? And so what that would do, what that would get me, got to put my other glasses on. So Sorrel's $22 million, it's 44 units per building. If you put that into the 44 into the 5,374, you're going to build 122 Sorrels at 22 million, you're going to wind up with $2 billion, $687 million. So we need $6 billion, $300 million if we built out all of, all, all of our new population, all the new population in the district between now and 2045. If we built it as Sorrels, it would only add up to in 2022. All of those are caveats. It would only be $2 billion, $687 million. It would not get us there. If we did it as the San Jose 80-unit seven-story, so we have 80 units that are at $55 million. If I do the same exercise, it comes out to $3 billion, $695 million. So it doesn't get us there either. So if all of our new population growth were put in seven-story buildings that match, you know, what they built in San Jose, we would not generate enough ad valorem tax revenues to cover the cost of expanding the fire staff. So our conclusions that we want to leave you with, and I'll be answering questions here in just a moment, is that our, our ability to respond and our aid partners' ability to response, respond to fires are not adequate to mitigate hazards and risks from, you know, four to seven or eight-story residential buildings. We don't have the staff. And so to, to back up, one of the things I've heard, I think I've heard, I hope I had it, I heard correctly, was that there was a desire, a hope that our mute, our auto aid and our mutual aid, together with the current levels of our staffing, would be enough to mitigate building, you know, four to, more four to seven-story buildings, and that eventually we would get to have enough money to expand the staffing of the fire district. And we believe that both of those assumptions don't stand up to scrutiny and that it's untenable for, to, to look at our, our district staffing and our aid partners and think that they can provide coverage for four to eight-story residential buildings. And we don't believe, from, based on the numbers that I just showed you, we don't believe that we will generate revenues in the next 25 years to increase our staff. So we make a few overarching suggestions, recommendations. One, we believe that heightened mask codes that you put in Gateway documents when they finally get approved, that, that they should be commensurate with the fire district's capacity. And that's where, you know, earlier in my talk, when I was saying that, you know, we wanted to be partners and that we thought that there needed to be resiliency, and, and this is what we're referring to, that right now, and I realize that this is going to be controversial, we are recommending to you that you limit building heights at the current time to 40 feet, that's under four stories, those are garden-style apartments, and that you would hold that in place until there was adequate funding in line established for mid-rise residential building fire suppression. And this is one that Ed could talk to better than I, but we've, we're suggesting that you use some enhanced fire code elements in residential buildings over two stories. So three-story buildings may not require certain elements, and there may be some improvements there that will make life better for the firefighters and life safer for the residents in those apartments. And I realize, I certainly realize that looking at that 40 feet, there's probably a lot of squirming, it's a lot lower, it's not even four stories. And I don't really see that this is incompatible with what you have on the table. Because in the Gateway plan, you only have 500 units that you anticipate being built. So the Gateway area is, has a grow out, there's no date on it at this point in time, but there's, there's an anticipated grow out of 3,500 units. And there's an anticipated grow out of 500 units between now and 2045. And if you look at 500 units and you look at something like you just approved for the Valley West area, you have 22 units that are in a three-story configuration. If I, if I looked at the plans, I didn't watch that meeting because I think I had a fire meeting that night, but I believe it's got a combination of two and three-story configuration, and it occupies .56 acres. So if you built, if you developed a form code for something like that, for 500 units in the Gateway area, it would take under, less than 15 acres, maybe a little more, because I don't, I don't, I'm a walker, so I don't count roads. So I don't think that putting together a plan that actually put in these parameters for the next 20 years is going to make any difference to the grow out of that plan over the next 40 years or 50 years. So that, that part, this last part, that's, that's, these guys don't have anything to do with that. That's just my telling you that I don't think this is a tragedy and requires you to take the whole plan and throw it out, or that we're saying you can't do anything in the Gateway, that there's no opportunities. It does suggest that for that first 500 units, that they won't be as tall and have the mass that some may have hoped. And I will answer any questions you have.
Wait a minute. Thank you, Eric. Just, I should have asked this in the beginning, but can you give us your background?
Oh, I worked at Humboldt State University for 29 and a half years. I started there in July of 83, 1983, and I retired about 10 years ago. So I worked there 29 and a half years in the Fisheries Biology Department. I'm a population geneticist, working with trout and salmon.
I felt it was important for you to say what you did because it, it makes a lot more sense. So, so I'm going to open it up first to the planning commission to ask all their questions, and then we're going to open it up to the public. So Scott?
Yeah, I wanted to start it off, excuse me, by saying thank you for putting together such a detailed and thoughtful presentation. I appreciated getting to read it ahead of time. More importantly, I think, on behalf of everyone, thank you, that all of you do to help keep us all safe, and we realize how important that is and value your work. I have a couple of questions. My first question is, what are the fire district's current plan for the already existing four, five, six-story buildings that we already have in the district? Because it would seem from your presentation that you're woefully unprepared or understaffed to address any fire issues in those existing multi-story buildings.
I, I'll let, I'll let, I'll let Chris fill that one.
So the short answer is yes, we are. We rely heavily on our mutual aid partners, and as Director Lautenschlager was saying, it's like, it's, the only agency we know we're going to have is Humboldt Bay Fire because we have contract with them. With our other allied agencies that are nearby, it's not a given that they're going to be able to show up because they may not have staffing. So that's where we're at. So the short answer is yes, we are understaffed for it currently.
So you're not fully prepared to deal with an emergency in like the BSS building on campus or something like that?
No, we would be way understaffed for a large emergency there.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I'll, I'll just add to that. I've, I've had this conversation with Chief McDonald and, because, you know, I said, we're, we're telling him not to build another four-story Sorrel until we have a bigger fire department. And he went, yes. And we've had two incidences already in Sorrel where there's been evacuations, and we've basically been lucky.
Okay, hopefully that's not the plan longer term. I'm curious, given different construction methods for newer buildings, if there's fire suppression code required, sprinklers, whatever that is in the building, how does that change the staffing needs from the fire district's perspective versus perhaps older buildings?
So, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. So most new construction requires fire sprinklers. They have enhanced fire protection systems in there, fire sprinklers, fire alarms for early notification, which is super important for us. Early notification is, is one of the biggest keys. I don't know if you noticed the slides. One of the things that we're looking at, and, and Eric spoke about it, was form-based code for the Gateway project specifically, and also prescriptive design from the building department's side. And that would incorporate different types of construction, more fire-resistant construction to keep the, you know, if there is a fire in a building, to keep it more compartmentalized so that it doesn't spread quickly throughout the building. That'll help us with the resources that we have on scene, the physical bodies that we have on scene. You know, we have a, I'll just use Sorrel Place as, as an example, you know, not only do we have to fight the fire there, we have to search the entire building, we have to evacuate all the people out of that, that building. It's not just go in and put the fire out. It takes a lot of people, especially when you get into a multi-story building, you go, going up and down four and five floors, and Chris and I have done it together more times than we can remember. And it, it, it's a huge strain on resources when you get above grade like that, you know, three stories, four stories, it's, it's, it's a huge drain. And again, getting the people out, you know, prescriptive code, or, excuse me, prescriptive designs, you know, enhance degress from the buildings so that we can get people out better. It might exceed what the current code requirements are, but again, it's going to help us on the other end of it to be able to do more with less, I guess is a good way to put it. That answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one more question, then I'm sure other commissioners have questions.
I'll, I'll just add to that from a board perspective. We're not going to substitute a need for staff, you know, there's no formula that can, that says if we do this, that means we can get by with 10 staff. So we're all in line with that. With regard to the existing buildings, they've, they've crept up on us. I mean, this conversation that we're having now, probably we should have had five years ago, maybe, maybe 10 years ago, ahead of all of this contemplation, but it didn't take place. And, and so we're, we're doing it now because we need to have it. Since the form code came up, I, I talked to Justin about this as well, and I actually recommend that you, you and maybe even Ben Noble, I don't know if he comes up here or when he comes up here, but that you go on the Arcata apartment and dormitory tour, because I, there are elements that the chief likes that, and other elements he doesn't like. That, so for example, at the tea garden, the way the access, and this is where I was talking about, we're going to come back into access later. The tea gardens, the way it's constructed, you bring a truck in there, if you have a fire there, all that fire debris is going to fall on the truck. Other places, there's fire lanes where, where they're almost useless, and you have cars parked in there that are going to try to come out while you're trying to get your fire truck in there. You can have open stairwells with, so Sorrel and Plaza Point are all closed. Everything's closed. You get a fire in one of those apartments, the door, they leave, they leave the door open, and the whole building gets smoked up. Something like the apartment, the apartments slash dormitories around the soccer field present much, much less of a challenge because they have open stairwells with a, with a pod of apartments that come off those. So if you have an event in one apartment, it won't, and if it burns the whole thing down, we have a serious problem. But you're not going to have smoke from that one unit make half the building or the whole building uninhabitable and have people with smoke inhalation problems.
My last question is, given these challenges that you talked about and the challenges that already exist in Arcata, and given the, the clear direction that Cal Poly is moving with building more six-story or bigger buildings, what conversations has the fire district had with Cal Poly about addressing these issues?
Well, some of you that have read the Mad River Union know that we wrote a rather strong, pointed, very direct response to their EIR. They, you know, they had a, they had a section in their EIR that They, you know, they had a, they had a section in their EIR that said their, their conclusion was that there was less than a significant effect, and we wrote them a rather pointed and strong response saying that we didn't think that was the case. We've, we, we haven't heard anything from the university yet. I don't know exactly if we will. But we have had meetings with Senator McGuire and Assemblymember Wood, and we have a conference with, I believe President Jackson will be there, but I know that it will be senior administration, senior fire district staff, senior, or the board, senior board members, and the senator and the assemblyman. And I have no idea. I mean, we've basically told them the same thing. We've told you right here that there's, that we, we can't deal with those buildings, that we don't have the staff to do it. And they can either mitigate for it. I mean, all of your problems may go away if they give us, if, if, if the state comes through and says, it is so important for them to have those six and seven-story buildings that, you know, we'll give you five million dollars a year, prorated forever into the future for inflation, plus build you another station and build, you know, to, to do these sorts of, of defend fires, look at suppression in these kind of buildings, we need a training center. You know, some of you may have seen them around the counties, and they're, they're not whole buildings, but they're little pieces of buildings that they can train on. Because none of the, all of these auto aid and other partners that we have in the county, we don't train together on, I mean, everybody, everybody that would go into a unit like that needs to train together on the units that, that they're gonna have to go into. And this county, it's, I mentioned before, earlier Sacramento Regional Communication Center, all of those fire agencies work together, they cross-train together. Um, you know, if somebody shows up, or a fire breaks out, they show up, they know what they're to do, they work together. That hasn't happened yet in Humboldt County. So it's like a new, this is brand-new game. With regard to the buildings, they've, as I said earlier, they just snuck up on us. There was this one here, it's like, ah! And then all of a sudden, another one popped up over here, and then finally, it's like, okay, stop, there needs to be a serious conversation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, are you fin, were you finished?
Nope, I'm done, yep.
Looks like Dan, Scott?
Yeah, sure. This topic must be happening up and down the state. There's so much state incentive and sometimes mandate towards infill. Uh, we're all, you know, this is such the theme right now. I imagine fire districts all over the state are having these same challenging conversations, and that their math is similar in many settings. Is there a larger conversation beyond this Humboldt Bay region that you guys are part of, or that the City of Arcata's part of, or Humboldt Bay Fire District, or anybody around here is?
I, I have, I have no idea. I'm, I'm ignorant of any collective effort, maybe.
Um, we've had discussions with chiefs from others, such as San Luis Obispo, for instance, talking about some of the projects that might be going in through Cal Poly, and how they've addressed some of their issues. And their response essentially was, we got a little bit of money, but it wasn't enough to overcome everything, is what it came down to. So that's the, about the extent of our conversations at this point, as far as trying to, yes, other agencies have the same issue, and we just seem to be quite a bit farther behind as far as our staffing levels compared to theirs.
And on the staffing levels to meet this standard of coverage that you were describing, you talked about mutual aid from Eureka, and I imagine that their fire departments having similar conversations right now, too, and will grow to some extent to keep up with the buildings that are being built or proposed to be built in Eureka as well. So when you said that Arcata needed an additional twenty-four staffing, does that include the mutual aid that you would be getting from Eureka if they're also increasing their staffing levels?
Yeah, the numbers I showed were what I would consider minimal numbers for the region, and it, it's, this is actually a big challenge for me personally, because I look at our district, and I know that we have Humboldt Bay Fire, and I don't really know what we need. And that twenty-four individuals, fourteen people on staff, actually only gets our district as district alone to residential house fires. That's what we would need to cover our own residential house fires. Our staffing levels now to do residential house fires, we need to bring people in. Now, if you're asking, is Humboldt Bay Fire gonna increase, I have absolutely no idea. We would still get auto aid and mutual aid when we needed it. It's always contingent on their availability. So I don't know if I answered your question.
So the twenty-four bodies Eric talked about, we have three shifts, A shift, B shift, C shift, so that, you divide that over three shifts, that's eight more personnel on top of the six per day that we have on. That brings you to the fourteen. As far as Humboldt Bay Fire, they have five stations with three people minimum on each unit. So they're looking at fifteen plus two chief officers, or they could have their trucks staffed with four, which we don't have a truck, so that increases their staffing to seventeen. So on a typical single-family residence response, they're looking at four units, four of those five units responding, and they also have auto aid with other agencies, too, that come in. So they supplement and augment their responses with those additional personnel, just like we do with other agencies coming in. The difference is, we start off farther behind the power curve with the number of staffing that we've got.
Judith, Matt, Peter, do you guys have any questions?
Do you have any plans to work with Senator McGuire and Assemblyman Wood to get more state funding? It, it sure seems like we need more money, so maybe the state can help?
Well, as Director Lauten Schlaeger said, we had an initial meeting with them, and they're definitely, they put it on their radar. I was there for the meeting, and they definitely have it. They're like, wow, you know, thank you for the information. We weren't aware of how significant this was. Now that we're aware of this, we definitely wanna address it. I can't say that they're gonna allocate money to us or not, but what, it is on their radar. So it is, you know, being discussed and exchanging ideas and thoughts and seeing where it goes. That's, I mean, we're in, kinda in the infancy at this point with it.
So I'll, I'll add one other point. I would, at one level, I will answer your question, yes, that the senator, I can't speak for the assemblyman, but I know the senator has been involved, heavily involved in promoting CAL FIRE and expanding CAL FIRE capabilities. I believe that, I don't know the numbers, there is funding, whether it's gonna get cut, because we're gonna go back into a deficit. So actually, what it's gonna look like, I have no idea. But there is a program that's starting up through the state to give Prop thirteen districts some relief. I mean, huge part of our problem is that after, when Prop thirteen was passed, the state and the counties, they all got together and said, you guys get five-point-six percent. And we've had the same thing, and we've moved from being a volunteer organization to being a career organization. And so there are, at the state level, one of the challenges that presents for us is that's temporary money. You know, that's, we'll give you two million dollars a year for ten years. And we go, we hope they extend it.
Uh, thank you. So I, I really appreciated the distinction between the ad valorem property tax and the special tax. I'm, I'm wondering if the way the special tax works, where it's not based on property values, is inherent in sort of the nature of those special taxes, or if you could pass a future one that was based on property value?
The answer to that is no. That, you know, they, they, that's part of the Prop two-eighteen, GAN limits, and I'm not an expert on those, but we have limits that are based on inflation and our population that max out what the district can be. We can, there's, we can go to the voters and go over that, and, but what we can do with all those, but, but they're not based on the value of property. They're not an additional property tax. They're an assessment for parcels and the activities that take place on those parcels. And so...
My second question is about, you know, the mid-rise buildings or the, the Sacramento low-rises. I, I like that, that distinction. I'm curious if you looked at other jurisdictions and how they treat, you know, four-to-eight story buildings? Because, I mean, it is a pretty common height, right? Like a five-over-one, you know, it seems like it's a pretty common height throughout the state, and I'm, I'm surprised there aren't guidelines from the NFPA for that height. And so I'm, I'm just wondering if you could expand on that a bit more.
Well, even if we look at the building features and code requirements, it still doesn't give us the bodies that's separate. And the NFPA might give a guideline of, you should have, whatever it was, twenty-four bodies, I believe, or...
Twenty-five for a three-story.
Twenty-five for a three-story. That doesn't mean we've got them, you know? A, a, as much as we would like to show up, just like San Francisco, and have ten fire engines and four trucks on scene with four battalion chiefs, it just doesn't happen with us. We don't have that ability to do that here. Even if we, even if we used every mutual aid agency in Humboldt County, by the time we got there, we'd be looking at a bed of coals. Many of you may remember the, the, and this is a separate issue, but the warehouse that burned out in Samoa several years back. We had resources that came down from Del Norte County on that, so that's how significant it is, and being behind the curve with the, the number of bodies that we can put on a fire scene in the first ten minutes.
I'm done.
Judith, do you have any questions before I open it to the public?
Yeah, I guess if you've made clear how you feel about the order in which the Gateway Plan should be considering the possibility of buildings four stories and higher. I'm wondering if you can recommend specifically standards that the Planning Commission should be incorporating into both our plan and our code? And this isn't something that you maybe can, you know, do off the cuff here, but it, it would certainly help us if you would be in future communication with us as we develop those standards, codes, and schedules. And so I think you put your finger on something with regard to the form-based code, but we hadn't been considering of how that would interact with the fire code as well. It would be great if we could hear an update with how you're communicating with staff, and perhaps another visit, visit to the commission as we're developing those, those standards. Is that something that would be possible?
So I guess I'm, would wanna, are you referring to height standards or building form standards?
Both.
Well, I, I definitely, and the fire marshal is a better person to answer the, the form code. But so, when I, I've watched the form code videos, and I've looked at things in the plan, in the draft plan, and there are certain elements, like the streetscape, where you have one lane and parking, and then you have a median with grass and a median and trees in it, and then like a bike lane or something. I think there'd be universal view from the, from the fire marshal and the fire chief that that's probably not a very fire-friendly design, because traffic can't get out of the traffic lane. If we're coming down the road, a car can't get out of that lane and over onto the bike lane, and we can't either. There's trees up and two gutters and a median, we can't drive over that and get on the bike lane. So those are, those are the kinds of streetscape elements. And then what I refer to as facade elements, and I don't mean little doodads and decorations, but the way the parking places work and the way pullouts and entrances into buildings, both the fire chief, assistant fire chief, and I'm gonna assume that the fire marshal would have some insights. And, you know, in, in the other conversations I've had, I've, I've acknowledged that these are all things that are, that are your responsibility, that it's, that's, that all of that is your responsibility, but we may have suggestions. You may have two or three ways that, that an engineer or an architect could do it, and one of them would get an A from us and another would get an F. And if we can tell you which one is an A and which one is an F before somebody gets an approval, it would be beneficial for everyone involved. And the way to do that is not necessarily in, in my wheelhouse.
Would you be willing, would you be willing to continue to comment on the proposals as they come through rather than waiting until we're done with the process? Is, I guess, what, what I'm asking? Because it seems like there, there are detailed criteria here that you could help us with as we go along, and I'm wondering if you would be willing to do that.
I think there's probably, I'm gonna turn this over to Ed, but I do believe that he and Dilo already have started some conversations, at least that's, I think that's what I've been told.
Yeah, if I could just jump in real quick. I mean, we reached out to Arcata Fire real early in the Gateway area process. We've had several conversations, Ed and I, staff and, and the fire marshal have had conversations preliminary early about the kinds of ways to mitigate some of these concerns. You know, do you wanna recognize that there are both, you know, fire suppression and, and other design elements that they've discussed, but there's also the staffing, you know, that they're, they're seeking to, you know, to improve the staffing levels there. But certainly, we've had discussions, and I think we'll continue to have discussions as we're developing these. And we're not gonna be shooting for F entrances. We may be getting As and Bs, but certainly not F entrances. So yeah, that's, that is absolutely the plan, and, you know, we've engaged early, and, and we'll continue to do so as we develop out the form-based code.
And I agree with what David said, and we've worked together, I think, pretty well. We also incorporate the Building Department with this as, as well, the, the building official. So we have, I'd say, a pretty open line of communications between all of us.
Great, thank you very much.
If there are no more questions, I will open this up to public comment. Go ahead, Ed.
So I, I just was gonna follow up with Judith's. I wasn't sure, you know, with, with building height and mass. And when you look at point number two, it says limit building height to less... And when you look at point number two, it says limit building height to less than 40 feet until funding is established for appropriate fire response. And I have no idea when that may take place. But, and as I've said, you're, as, as the draft plan is now written, you're anticipating 500 units over the next 22, 23 years. And that's only like 15 or 20 acres. And so I don't see, you know, when I talked to the chief, he says, "No more sorrels until we have more staff." And that's, if he comes to the city council, I think he'll say that in about that many words because we're at our maximum that we can, that we can handle. We're beyond that. We, we have buildings that are beyond our capacity and it's not safe for the residents. So don't add any more until the community as a whole has come together to fund these. And to me, the funding, the funding obligation is only partially with the fire district. You know, if an entity like the city is creating a hazard or a risk, it's not a hazardous risk, the burden isn't, doesn't necessarily, we may, we may be asked to cooperate, and I think we should cooperate. But the burden to mitigate for that risk falls with whoever's proposing the activity. And that's the city, together with developers, that's proposing the activity. So in my view, as, as, as a public official and a director, I go, that, that falls in your wheelhouse to, to take care of that. We need, we need to cooperate with you. That's our obligation. And I don't, I don't know where, where you're going to get money from in that 20-year period. So now, another calculation I did. Right now, we pay $180 per person. So our per capita fire bill for the district at 36,000 people with $6.5 million, $6.4 million budget, our per capita is around $180 per person. If, and I realize it's, you know, to take a number like that and make it useful, it's always squishy because taller buildings are going to automatically increase that. But if we take that $180 and put it into the $11,300,000, the district will reach a level where we would generate that much income when there's about 63,000 people in the district. And when I take the model that, that I modified from David's and extend the population out into the future using 0.94% growth rate, we'll cross that threshold in 2074. And I don't, I don't view that as a prediction. That, I view that as going, oh, this is, this is not something that's immediately resolvable, that we can be confident that it's, the problem is, and challenges can be addressed in. I'll be dead by then. I'm 70 years old, but I would, I'd be 122 years old then, so. But I'm just trying to give you a timeframe that we would get there. And if we have to go to voters, I mean, I make no prediction. I'll let others make that about whether you went to the voters and asked them to double or triple their Measure F or their benefit assessment to build seven and eight-story buildings.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to open it to the public now? Okay.
One thing, and I'll make it quick. So between the two of us sitting here right now, we've got over 60 years of fire service experience between Chris and I. One of the things that I think is super important for, for everybody to consider too, we've been talking about a specific single incident. If we commit everything to a, a single incident, we have another incident that, that we get dispatched to during another or during one of these incidents and everything's stripped, we absolutely will not be able to do it. And I'm including even the simplest calls that we could potentially be going to or it'd be severely delayed in, in our response to even a medical aid if we're committed that much on one, one specific property. So it's just an addition. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, members of the public, please step forward. You'll have three minutes.
Shock from the standpoint of Cal Poly. I mean, it's just, when that ERI came out, I immediately went to the city council and also called up the fire district. Total failure from their standpoint for an ERI. It's just unforgivable. I would also say total failure, failure from their standpoint of working with the Arcata Fire District. It's just unbelievable that they could do this. And they're not acting like a good neighbor. I mean, we've already seen this from the standpoint of the Creekside. We had senior citizens housing that came in and took taxpayer money, tripled it and bought that property. So they're not acting like an appropriate neighbor at all. And I've also seen Judith go over there, tried to work with them, and they're, obviously they're not responding. So it's just embarrassing what they're, what they're doing here. I'd also address that from the standpoint of four days after Eric gave his talk. So on December 16th, there was a story in the New York Times, front page cover of France, seven-story apartment building caught on fire. And basically, 160 firefighters responded within 10 minutes, 60 fire engines. There were 10 deaths from the building. Five of them were children. There were three or four critically injured people that weren't expected to live. And this was all from smoke from the bottom story. So you're imagining that it's all about fire. It's a lot more about that. It's about smoke. And there's been some fires in New York City in the last year. The same thing happened. A young child was playing with a stove downstairs apartment. They, the mother caught up with them. They ran out the door, left the door open. It created a draft. All the people above them, quite a few of them died. So this is, I mean, unbelievable that Cal Poly is saying that they're going to start construction this month, right now. And if they're going to do that at six or seven stories without this all worked out, some people need to be fired over there. This is just unbelievable because what they're doing is they're going to be putting students' lives in hands. They're going to put first-handers' lives in hands. And on top of that, they basically don't care about the taxpayers in Arcata. There's a lot of, you know, working-class people here that do not work for the university. And they're, and basically they're going to ask them to put out all this money because of their, their plan. They had, they had alternatives. They could have a design at three, four stories and work with the fire department. So let's try that as a starting point and, and get off this, well, we'll just do whatever we want and stomp on the rights of citizens of Arcata.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that amazing mathematical presentation. It's going to take me a bit to wrap my head around some of the numbers. But one of the things that really stood out in one of your comments was about, we should have been doing this 10 years ago. And this is what really concerns me about how our city operates is that it seems like it's in the wrong order. We should all be gathering around and talking about the basics before we proceed to talking about the dreams or the ambitions of whatever we're planning to do. And Sorrel Place, I know people there and I've had an opportunity to be in there on the official tour in the beginning, almost a year ago now. And the balconies, I felt, were just really scary. And then I went and visited somebody's apartment and that balcony has, on the third floor, one of those throw-over ladders to escape, I guess, if something happens. And again, talking about form-based codes and designs and materials and, and fire suppression concepts, also was spoken about the stairwells, open stairwells. I've always felt that, not only just for fire and safety, but for thriveability of people living in these places, you know? To be living in someplace where interior hallways, interior enclosed stairwells, elevators, tiny balconies, throw-over ladders. We really need to consider the livability of our community. And it's not just about a roof over somebody's head. It's about a safe place to be in our community. And if these experts here are suggesting that going high is going bad because it's very unsafe and of great risk, we should be reducing risks in our community, not increasing them. And so I just really thank you very much for your presentation.
Good evening. So way back in 2021, when the Gateway, thereafter the Gateway was released, I came to you and pleaded with you to talk to the fire district and work out, you know, work out their concerns and figure out a solution before we continued on with the discussions of building heights over four stories. And we're just, I mean, the fact that we're just getting to it now is kind of appalling. And I'm glad it happened. I think it hopefully opened some eyes. But yeah, we really have to find some solutions to this before the discussion continues on with going past four stories or 40 feet is what the fire district is saying. So another thing I want to throw out is the standard of coverage needs to be done first, too. I don't know, it was mentioned, I don't, I just want to make sure you guys heard that. That needs to be done by the city. It's the city's responsibility to do that. You know, I think Loya loves to say that we're not shooting for the Maserati of plans with the Gateway District, but I think going up to four-stories buildings is looking like it, that it's actually is the Maserati plan. And it's a plan that we can't afford. So I think a solution would be for Cal Poly and the city of Arcata solution to, to address the actual concerns of the fire district would be to limit building heights to four stories or 40 feet. So anyways, I, I, I just really hope that we address this and we're not going to go zero to 60 and pass by the opportunity, you know? Like, maybe we'll let the, the horse finally catch up to the cart and make this a good plan. The cities, you know, the, the city, the community is really asking to stop at four stories. And possibly in the future, we can go higher than that. But I think we really have to get to affordability level before we can do that. So anyways, I, I hope you guys all heard that. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Special thanks to Eric for his great talk. And I want to give a heartfelt thanks to everyone in AFD for everything that you do in our city. I thank you almost every day. The, Eric's talk and the questions from the commissioners and their answers were very complete. The Eric's talk at August 4th, Planning Commission, is on the arcataone.com website. It's a transcription. It takes about four minutes to read. There, the AFD December 13th board meeting is on there as a video. It's somewhat like what Eric said tonight, but a little different. One issue I had with Eric's side, he has a slide called "Worst Case Scenario." It means, what, he doesn't mean that this is the worst that can happen. He means that this is a, a bad situation. It doesn't include such things as Ed mentioned, that there's another fire or emergency at the same time or the ladder truck is needed elsewhere, or there's an accident somewhere that blocks 101. The, essentially, we're in an unacceptable situation, as, as I think everyone in this room understands. The, let's see. Eric mentioned that these are $20, $22, all of his figures. I'll mention that staff requires pensions, medical benefits. These things tend to double at the rate of inflation, so it's just going to get worse. The, he said that there need to be, it's kind of as a joke, there need to be $6.3 billion worth of property value increased in the Gateway area to pay for this. That's roughly the value of all the buildings in the entire county, $6.3 billion. Scott, Commissioner Davies asked about the existing buildings. The Behavioral Science Building is considered a daily-use building and so considered to be less risk. And yes, it is a question of luck. It's not a good situation at all. Eric mentioned that access is a crucial element. In arcataone.com, there's articles about L Street. There is not good access in the current plan for L Street as it's proposed. You can look up the GHD presentation on that. We don't have to stop the conversation about toll roads, as Eric pointed out, until funding is established. So there might be need for two different or parallel plans. I'll, I like the quote, "No more sorrels until we have more staff." And I'll mention the quote from Philip K. Dick, "Reality is that which, when you stop believing in it, it doesn't go away." This is not going to go away. I think we all know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Hello. Thanks to Eric and to the, all of you tonight for coming and giving this presentation. I don't really have anything new to add, just to reiterate, because I feel strongly about, you know, what was said. And so thanks for clarifying that defending structures of four stories are higher and the hurdles that it presents. Also for pointing out that the holes in the funding for equipment and also for staff. And also for the fact that they'd be relying on mutual aid throughout Northern Humboldt to defend one building. And as you've said, what happens if there's multiple large-story building fires? Let alone if all those other mutual aids are busy fighting other fires at the time. You know, and finally, thanks for breaking down the necessary cost and, you know, probably the ultimate burden on the taxpayers. I mean, it's, it's a real thing, you know, because it's, we're, I'm, as a homeowner, I'm proud to pay my share, to, you know, help to fund the fire department, you know, as we can. But when you're asking to multiply that for, you know, things that they haven't worked out the details on and unrealistic costs, hopefully we can get to a point with real costs of, you know, what it's going to be to build these housing because we obviously need it. You know, and I spent the last year asking for specifics on the Gateway and we've continued to look at things from a high level. I do appreciate that we're looking at some specifics tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Anyone else? Is there anyone online?
Yeah, we've got a few online. Go ahead, Jane.
Hello again. I did send you the comments earlier in the day. One of the, first of all, I want to thank the fire department and Eric in particular for that incredibly good presentation. He tried to make it as comprehensible as possible. I think he did a pretty good job. I seem to recall, I recall a couple of things. When, when Cal Poly, when HSU was, when, when the village was proposed, it was a combination of two and three-story buildings at the time, which went down because there wasn't a need, a whole series of things. But in any event, Cal Poly had planned to buy that at the time. Now, this new proposal appears to be going ahead regardless of anything anybody's saying. And that's why it may take something from the Senate and congressional level or governor's level to stop it. I don't know what it's going to take, but they have signed a contract with this new builder. They're planning to go ahead and they're expecting Arcata to pay the bill, apparently, for doing this. I recall, I seem to recall, we were trying to staff the fire stations and proposed a, did a proposal for there to be three at each station, and that failed. This last one just barely made it to get the assessment this time around. So to expect people... barely made it to get the assessment this time around. So to expect people to pony up because of HSU, or because Arcata decides to build four to eight story buildings, is, is a real stretch. And I think you need to understand the liability of the city for deciding to go ahead with such buildings when we don't have the ability to protect them. In terms of details, certainly, there are lots of things that can be done to help mitigate, such as, you know, open stairwells, such as sprinkler systems and things like that. But I don't think that will significantly offset the dangers of fires in such buildings. The reason probably the Creamy District has done so well is its concrete. Large story buildings these days are not, are concrete, and that's a problem. So I think we need to really look at the cost of construction of anything over four story or over 44 feet, and all the environmental issues I discussed before. But I think you would get a major taxpayer rebellion if you tried to ask for a whole lot more money from the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you, Jane.
Not just because they see it's Arcata.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Anthony.
Hello again. Thank you. I just wanted to come in and say that thank you to the Arcata Fire District for putting together your presentations to the public in here tonight. It's very important stuff. And now that these safety issues have been addressed as insufficiently resolute, I want to remind the City of Arcata staff and government that the words malfeasance or incompetence or neglect of duty start to become something that could be put on the table. And that is important for all of you to remember as you make decisions coming forward. I think it's important to focus your efforts on reining in Cal Poly. I also want to remind you that the bill text of AB 1763 says that a senior citizen housing development must be included in population density bonus programs, and Cal Poly made sure that that was not going to happen. So there, there are a lot of things that aren't lining up. They're called idiosyncrasies. And I think that all of us of the Arcata public have been asking you to slow down for a while now. And I'm just really grateful that some experts whose opinions should be acknowledged will be. And if not, I guess we start looking at those words incompetence, neglect of duty, and malfeasance. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jen.
Hey there. My name's Jen Calt, and I, I am a resident of the Arcata Fire Protection District, although I don't live in the city limits of Arcata. And this was a really interesting presentation, very eye-opening. And I, I realize that, you know, all the speakers so far are seeing this through the lens of whether or not there should be a gateway plan or more housing in Arcata or not. But I think it, you know, I, I believe the Arcata Protection, Fire Protection District is 36,000 people, and the City of Arcata is about half of that, maybe a little bit more. So I think it's really important for people outside the city limits to understand all of this because, you know, let's say there's a, an incident at the BSS building at Humboldt State or something, and there's also houses burning down in, you know, outlying areas. That's, you know, this is a, sounds like a current understaffing, underfunding problem. And I, for one, actually would, would vote to increase the parcel tax above $180 a year if that's what it takes to house more people in our community. One thing I heard the Fire Protection District rep say is that our current tax structure that funds fire protection is predicated on sprawl. And if we're going to actually, you know, take meaningful action on climate change, we need to change that. So I, I, I'm don't, I'm just kind of flabbergasted by this whole conversation and really interested in how we can get the state to take action, because this can't be the only community where this is happening. So thank you so much. And I look forward to hearing a, a broader conversation about this, not just within the, the microcosm of the Gateway Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, good evening. And thank you for that great presentation. If funding for the necessary fire district expansion comes via a popular vote, and voters fail to approve funding, will the city just cross their fingers and hope for good luck? And how likely is it that the fire district can find alternative sources of funds? What liability for death or injury will the city have in the case of a fire at the Craftsman's Mall, Sorrel Place, or in the future for tall buildings in the Gateway area, knowing that the fire district doesn't have the capacity to properly respond? If I were a parent, I wouldn't send my child to a dormitory that can't be properly protected, nor would I be a resident in the Gateway considering this. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, caller user one. You appear to be muted still. There you go.
Oh, hi. This is Patricia Eller-Dabler, and I live out on Moren Creek Road. I'm a nurse. And I really appreciate the presentation that was given today. I recently, we've lived here for 20 years, and I faithfully paid my fire insurance, and this year I had to defend it. So this whole idea about, I feel like minimizing the understanding about fire safety seems crazy to me. Luckily, I was able to get new fire insurance. I burn battery oper, I mean, I don't burn candles. I have battery operated candles. I mean, it's really serious. And I just, I just really appreciate the work. And as a nurse, I just, you know, think that it's the right thing to do, and especially for HSU also, to step up and be an example. If you're really Cal Poly, and you're supposed to be educating people, then do the right thing and be an example. That's all.
All right. Thank you. I think in my efforts to lower hands that were, you know, raised from, from speakers, I may have unintentionally lowered someone's hand. So please raise your hand if you still wish to talk. Not seeing anymore.
Okay, well, we'll close the public comment section. I just have one thing I wanted to say. Christian didn't talk either. So this is my dilemma. So the idea that when these large structures are built, the property taxes based on the assessed value will pay for the needed funds for our fire department to provide emergency services seemed, it just seems flawed, in reality, seems flawed, at least in the beginning. I'm just trying to figure out how this would work. Because the only way that would work is if all the structures were built out at the same time, like a developer or several will in unison build buildings at the same time and have the occupancy permit signed off at the same time exactly when property taxes are due, then all the money would come flowing in in a nice bow. So that's just not how it's going to happen. So what's most likely going to happen is that one will be built, then later another one, et cetera. But it'll take more than one building to fund the fire department. So I don't know how the city can allow a structure to be built when it's, the fire department can't provide emergency services to the upper stories. So I don't know what comes first, the chicken or the egg. Unless Cal Poly comes forward, I'm just not sure. We just need to figure this out. And then as far as Cal Poly, we have begged, pleaded, threatened. We, we can't make them. We can't make them pay their fair share. So maybe they would pay their fair share until we're built out, until, I just, I don't know how to make this work. I know we need housing, but we need, we need safe housing. So anyway, I'm just trying to think in reality, how, how we're going to be able to move forward with anything over 40 feet. So we have a lot more talking to do. Does anybody have any last minute?
Yeah, I have one tiny thing. Have, I'm sure you guys have discussed getting the word Arcata out of your name, like North Bay Fire Department, or something else that doesn't bring up reaction from the outlying communities?
Yeah, that, I don't, I don't know when we're going to revive that activity. We started it, and then the bill was $30,000 for painting decals on fire trucks and decals on uniforms and legal papers. Because we're all ready to do it. And then we were told the amount of staff time that would be required and all of that stuff. So we kind of said, okay, we'll wait.
I just have a question. It's actually not related to the Gateway Area Plan or anything of that sort. But just in response to the recent earthquakes, were all the crews dispatched? And, you know, was everyone out? And, you know, just kind of, you know, an incidence is like an actual natural disaster. It sounds like we have a 1906 situation that's probably going to happen, and the whole, the whole city's going to burn down. Is that kind of a true statement?
So during the earthquakes, we recalled all of our off-duty personnel, which we got almost all of them back, except for a couple of people that were still out of town. We staffed up our reserve engines. So that was great, having turned out. That showed the dedication of the members of our organization, along with the windstorm. Same, same thing. We got people back because we had a recall, because we had so many simultaneous calls. Every month when we give a director's report, or the chief gives the, the director's report, normally we're about 30% of overlapping calls. I think it was last month, we were around 40%. It was a little bit higher. So if we have one engine, one of our three out, it's about a 30 to 40% chance we're going to have a second one of our three out. So it's very common. It's, it's, today, listening to calls all day long, and talking about five calls in an hour and a half, it might have been three within 10 minutes, you know. So it's not uncommon to have that happen.
That's understood. Thank you for your response, you know, during the last events. I appreciate your guys' effort, and it's truly respected. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Arcata Fire Protection District. Thank you so much for that presentation. We, we might want you to come back. But thank you for spending all that time answering all of our questions. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on. Do you have something you want to say?
Just going to ask if you want to take a quick break.
Yeah, let's take a quick break.
Okay.
And we are back after our short break. So it is almost nine o'clock, and we have quite a few items left. So do we want to continue any of these to the next meeting, or, and just take public comment? What, how does everybody feel? Because it's all about how you feel, because it is pretty late. We all work full-time. Turn your speaker.
Is there a short item?
Our next agenda item, we're anticipating, you know, about an hour to work through the, the uh, the exercise that you started previously. The land use element, the growth management element are really just, you know, to kick them off, to get them into the public purview. And so that's pretty short. Um, and then the Planning Commission Annual Report. It's really up to your deliberations. I guess you could all have a show of hands, maybe who has big changes, who feels like it's pretty close. And then maybe you could take that one up if, if you wanted to. Or if you want to take any and all of them up.
So despite the fact that Heather's been sitting here for a few hours, my suggestion, somebody needs to make, I guess we have to make a motion to continue Business Item Two and Business Item Three, take public comment, obviously, to our next meeting. And then maybe we can actually approve the Planning Commission Annual Report tonight.
I, I'm with you on that.
So you're, you're thinking you would open those hearing items, take public comment and then continue them?
Well, yeah, on, don't we need to take public comment for Item Two and Three? Cause people are here, but we're, or do we just?
It's totally up to you. If you want to do it that way, that's, you're more than welcome to. I guess maybe a show of hands would be a good.
Okay, so we'll ta, yeah.
So yeah, a couple, a couple of comments, yeah.
Do, do somebody need to make a motion to?
Yeah, actually, these are not public hearing items, so we can just bring them back. There's not a, you don't need to necessarily continue them formally.
Okay, so let's let the members of the public who have been sitting here for hours and hours and hours come up and address the item, Business Item Number Two, Consider the Community Benefits Program Associated with the Great Bay Area Plan. Does anyone, did anyone come here to talk about that? No? Is it, okay, did anyone come here to talk about the land use and growth management elements update? Okay, Gregory, why don't you come up?
I'd like to address it from the standpoint of that we seem to be like doing things backwards. And I'm talking about the, I guess, the local coastal program, that that should be what you're, you know, putting your emphasis on. Because all of the other things, I mean, I don't see how you can vote for general plan. I don't know how you vote for the gateway or any of the growth elements without getting a definite answer on that. So it just, I'm not sure what the dates that you put on some of these things that, you know, really what, what is the order there? But it seems like you're going to be wasting some time if, if you don't address the coastal program first. Because, you know, that, that's really the answer to everything. I think this was, I mean, I wrote about this to you guys and I think then you took off with it. I mean, I noticed a few of you after that sort of said the same thing. But I guess just over time, it's gotten forgotten again. But I would really emphasize getting the answers. You know, it's, I think it was nineteen eighty-nine when that was updated last. And a lot of coastal program I'm talking about. And there's been a lot of changes, a lot of information as far as sea level rise that wasn't being addressed in, in that year. And it seems from listening to David's talks about this in the past, that it seemed that the city councils, you know, weren't ready to go forward with that because of, of the housing element, that they were worried that they were going to be restricted somewhat with the coastal commission. And that's part of the reason that this hasn't been addressed. And so we're sort of just like, you know, kind of still pushing this down the road a little bit and spending a lot of time talking about all these issues. And we should probably be getting that settled as quickly as possible so that you can focus on all these particular parts of the, the growth element and, 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 you know, not burn a lot of time and money that's been allocated. So that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregory.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGarry. And just to speak, what Gregory's saying, speak to that issue as well. A lot of the climate action thought right now in terms of lowering our greenhouse gas emissions, doing a lot of things to mitigate the climate change is one thing. But down on the ground with the extreme weather phenomenon that's happening and this and that, what a lot of the experts are talking about is risk assessment and vulnerability. And so when we look at all the plans that we have, you know, what are the risks and how do we assess those? And what, who are the vulnerable people or the vulnerable areas that we need to look at? So the coastal plan, the coastal zone, I think really truly is foundational, as is what we needed to hear tonight about fire. We need to look at the foundational things before we look at the development things, before we look at the ambitious dreams, as I spoke of before. So risk assessment and vulnerability, just take that into consideration. That's part of the climate action reality. So thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. I didn't even ask you if there's anyone online that wanted to comment.
Uh, there is on this item. Go ahead, Jane.
Okay, um, I apologize. I took too long a break and I missed the opportunity to talk about the amenities issue. So you went right past it, but I wanted to point out that we've spent a great deal of time discussing and selecting amenities before. It's clear that building greater than four stories is either desired by the Arcata community because we never did a valid representative survey, or feasibly, or feasible economically for contractors to build, particularly if we're trying to construct affordable housing due to the enormous cost of the required foundations and other building materials. So I think we need to address both the community's desires and the economic and environmental feasibility of constructing such buildings alongside the fire response issue. Okay, and then I have a comment on the land use plan. But I'll wait for that.
That's now, Jane.
Pardon me? That's now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, I wanted to compliment the amendments to the land use plan that appeared to be comprehensive and excellent. But there's only a very limited mention of the possible benefit of building ADUs and second housings on residential lots. I recently heard about a story about an individual who was purchasing individual homes, adding an ADU for that home, then adding a second home with its own ADU, allowing for the creation of four units on a single lot. This is a new and creative form of investment for owners and investors and a viable way of producing a major increase in residential units, depending on where we're trying to locate them. I think the Planning Commission and staff may wish to seriously explore and encourage development of ADUs and second housings, et cetera, as an alternative to focusing primarily on multi-story building. Limiting buildings to four stories may occupy more space per lot, but it solves the solar shading and fire department issues. Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks, Jane. Uh, there are no, no other commenters online.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to approve the Planning Commission twenty twenty-two annual report. Has everyone had a chance to look at this? Does it reflect accurately? Go ahead.
Yeah, there, uh, there is something, uh, before I say anything else, that might've actually been a typo. Number one is progress on the Planning Commission's goals of, from twenty twenty-two. And number two is Planning Commission Goals for twenty twenty-two. Is that supposed to be twenty twenty-three? Okay, great. In that case.
That's, that's exactly why I had you all look at this.
I, I know, I know, and we were supposed to fall asleep by this point in the packet. And, and we didn't. That woke us right back up again.
No, I, seriously, I appreciate that catch.
Yeah, so thank you. That, that really helps. One of the things that I would hope to see in, in that twenty twenty-three list is a big item on the general plan update, which doesn't appear to be on the list for twenty twenty-three. Am, am I missing something?
I'm sorry, what was the question about the?
Planning Commission Goals for twenty twenty-three, number two. There's nothing in here about the general plan update.
It's, it's under Item B, Finalized Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program.
Okay, I'd like to have a separate item for the general plan update because I think there's quite a bit more that we need to talk about with regard to the general plan than just things that are going to be in the strategic infill redevelopment plan or the local coastal program. At least I hope there will be. So I, I would request adding a separate item for work related to the general plan update.
You, you can certainly split that out. The general plan, so the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program was kind of the umbrella that housed several different, uh, long-range planning exercises we were going through. The general plan is kind of a core of that.
Right, I'd like to have the general plan update as its own item.
I just wanted to point out that it's in there.
Yeah, and, and request that the commission include that since that is the umbrella that should actually include these other things rather than the reverse.
How would you phrase that?
I would have Item A, be general plan update. Update relevant portions of the general plan.
So do, would it satisfy to just, instead of reading the, the bold words saying finalized strategic infill redevelopment program, if we just struck that and wrote general plan, would that?
No. The general plan is the umbrella under which all of these other things need to operate. And it's, and it's important that we recognize the general plan as, as it's often called, the constitution for the city of Arcata's future development. So I, I think that if what we want to do is to include things like the gateway program and the local coastal program as elements of the general plan, we actually need to have an item identified as complete the update of the general plan. Because it's not, it's not just going to be that. It's also the land use section and everything else. And there may be items that come up that we're not aware of yet. And there's nowhere to fit them in here unless we have an item for the general plan.
What are our thoughts on that? Commission, do we want to add that? I think it makes sense now that she explained it.
Yeah, I can't see any wrong in it either. It just seems, I mean, unless the city has a, something that's out of sequence or, or something like that about putting that in, it seems like an easy one.
And another item is in that number two. Goal C, you've used the same wording as for the previous year with regard to streamline permitting appropriately. I, I think what we actually want to do is to amend permit requirements and codes and standards to reflect community values. And that may include streamlining, but it may include other things as well. And so to identify that simply as streamlining already puts a policy direction there that we haven't actually all agreed on yet. Whereas the more, the more general amendment would allow us a broader range for our discussions.
I also agree with that.
I, I don't think I do. I, I really like seeing streamlined permitting appropriately. I like seeing that every year. And I have felt from the time I started this role that that was always an overarching goal of the commission and staff. And I mean, it doesn't come up very often, but it sure feels like a goal. And anytime that we can do anything, you know, like form-based code fits into that, I, I like to think. It always feels like it's a, something that we should be working towards.
Can, Judy, can you say it one more time?
Rather than using the term streamline to amend codes and permit requirements and standards, the rest of, the rest of that explanation can stand. But to assume that our amendments will all involve streamlining, I, I think unduly limits those discussions.
I don't feel the need for, but I don't have an objective objection to the first edit. But I'm, I agree with Dan that I, I'm, I like seeing streamlining in C under Part Two.
Yeah, I agree with Dan as well.
I would also like to see the streamlining language kept in.
Okay, it sounds like streamlining it is. I, I hope that our view of what we streamline takes into account what we may be losing in the process of limiting it to streamlining.
Well, this is just a summary of, this is just our goals. This is not like a code amendment. So what, what else? So we're going to, definitely going to add in the general plan update. And then what else did you want to change? Or anybody else?
I'm good with the rest of it.
I'm good with the rest of it.
So if I could seek a little clarification, I think what I understood was to make Bullet Two A finalize the general plan. Am I right so far?
Is, is that correct? Finalize the general plan? Is that what you had in mind?
I, I, I said, uh, update general plan, depending on when that's adopted, we may or may not finalize it.
Update general plan, okay. And then the language behind it, if we pulled the language from Two B, starting on, uh, public engagement around updates to the general plan and targeted rezoning, including the Arcata Gateway Area Plan, or well underway, the general plan will provide policy guidance on which targeted rezoning will be based. Commission looks forward to completing the various components of the general plan update in twenty twenty-three? Or is there some other language? I'm not, I'm not quite sure what to put there.
That sounds okay.
Okay. And then is it okay to strike the rest of Two B? I mean, the, there were just sort of introductory and concluding sentences around that originally. That was the nut of it.
Yeah, that seems redundant.
Okay, I think I understand.
Is there anything else? While she's looking, David, I'm going to be out of state next month and sitting families. So Vice Chair has volunteered just this minute to give the presentation in front of the city council. So we'll get together, or you guys can get together. We'll arrange that later. So now we are going to move on to correspondence and communication.
I'm sorry, can we get a?
Oh, are we voting? Do we have to vote on this?
Please.
Are we opening it to public comment?
Please.
Come on up.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Commissioner Mayor for your astute observations and comments. There actually are about six or eight typos or missing words in the document, if I can help on that, if, in any way.
We'll be able to do a tech edit.
Okay. The question on page two, H Projects, in the fourth line. in the fourth line says the commission has approved III use permits. Is that supposed to be 111? Or is that?
It's, it was accounting. That's three use permits.
Oh, three, okay, okay, that's easy. The, let's see here. Question about the goals for 2023. This may be a procedural question rather than an actual question about this report. But do we think that there's going to be time for the Two E, the commission to focus, shift its focus to remaining infill opportunity zones? Do we think that there's going to be time to make necessary code amendments, which seems to be important? Given all that is needed to be done, the question is, is what is the priority? Given that all this needs to be done with the Gateway Plan? So that does need an answer now, but just something to think about.
I have to say I didn't see this document before this meeting. But words do matter, and streamline really scares me when I hear that word. So what do you mean by that? Because I see a lot of action happening in this chamber that is perhaps streamlining things that ought not to be. We need some ebb and flow. So I just go along with Commissioner Meyer and say, "streamlining is concerning."
One item that's missing out of your annual report that should be in there is the fact of what was in the Coastal Commission report. There were specific tasks that you had to do. And one was to do the sea level rise report and study, which I believe there was a grant for $100,000. So that would be a good thing to have in that report and where we were at in that. Because that has, again, a pretty big, you know, pretty, down the road, where are you going to go with all your other parts of this? So I would definitely make sure you have that. And the other, the other aspect that you probably haven't been focusing on too is was that grand jury report that the city was required to give to the judge after the grand jury on the sea level rise. And there's interesting parts of that from the standpoint that you're, you're basically telling, you know, this judge that your answer to sea level rise is the Gateway Project. So I don't know how well that's going to fly in the future with all this additional information that we're talking about. So that's something that needs to be addressed. And the other thing that, that was part of this too, I think it was talking about our indigenous population and not to do any, any harm in that area. And part of the sea level, part of the Coastal Commission report that the city had done was there was a Phase Two where they were going to come back and basically enhance those levees. And at the same time, with all this development in the Gateway, there's going to be a natural wanting to protect that with levy protection to there. So you have to ask your question because we do this land acknowledgement here. We do it at city council. And from the standpoint, what was the basics of conflict with, in the 1850s? It was building all these levees and basically the conflict of shutting them off from the water source and conflict. So some would argue that building onto the levees is actually doing, is the same thing that was done in the past. And you're doing, you're doing harm, and you're not repairing the damage from the past mistakes.
Thank you. So anyone online?
We do have one online. Go ahead, Jane.
Thank you. And I just want to agree with Judith Mayer about the streamlining, the danger of focusing on that instead of some other word because we worry about streamlining meaning shortening the process and eliminating public input and discretionary review, even if it's against objective standards. Anyway, a simple thing on the first, on I cancellations, it says the regular meeting on August 23rd. Oh, no, no, it was 20, oh, that's the wrong thing. I'm wrong about that. Okay, sorry about that. I thought I had a 2023 that should be a 2022. But in any event, if there's something like that, I'll let you know. Anyway, thank you for letting me comment, and thank you for all the work you're doing. Tonight was very enlightening. And I agree with the focus on the general plan being a critical element of which the infill development plan is only a part. So thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Jane.
That's all.
Okay, now we will move on to course. Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Planning Commission Annual Report for 2022 as amended.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? All second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one's opposed, okay. Now can we go? I've been trying to do it three times. Correspondence and Communications, do we have anything?
We do have a couple. But I think in the interest of time, I will send out an email and then bring up the Correspondence and Communications next time. The one thing that is somewhat timely that I wanted to mention to you is that the, well, there's, there's two that I'll, that I'll bring forward. The Westwood Gardens project that you had approved a couple of months back was appealed, went to the hearing on January 4th with the city council. And I just wanted to write, report back to you rather that the city council upheld the Planning Commission's decision. There was lengthy presentations and, you know, deliberations on that. They did end up adding a condition of approval around trying to modify a couple of the site standards with respect to the gardens in particular. And the applicant was also amenable to trying to meet with the residents to see if there are any other minor improvements to the plans that could, you know, make a little headway with them. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was that our form-based code schedule, actually, I'm going to turn it over to Dilo to have you talk a little bit about this.
Yeah, so we sent an email out with some proposed dates to the commission this week. If you cannot make the dates that are in that email, please let me know as soon as possible. We have some limited availability with the consultant. And this, you know, is information that I have shared already. But essentially, we're planning a series of three public workshops. And each public workshop will be followed by a Planning Commission workshop to discuss the public input that came out of that session. So the intent is to build every time with the material and on the feedback that we've received. So again, please let me know if you cannot make those dates. And I think that was all we had to say about that.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, two things. One is I'd like to know what our policy is on people sharing, yielding their time to others. And if there isn't one, should we come up with one? Because it feels like something that could snowball. And the other is, should we just hang on to these two giant sections of the packet so that you don't have to reprint them?
Yes, please.
So that would be 6.2 and 6.3? Okay, that's it?
Anything else? If not, this meeting is adjourned.